Why did he even try it? If we can get Adam to sit down, we'll go ahead and start. I'm sorry, Adam. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. I'd like to welcome everybody out tonight to Planning Commission meeting. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Eva, if you would be so kind as to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could have roll call.
Mr. Anderson?
Yep.
Commissioner Munt?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Fay?
Here.
Commissioner Blazer?
Here.
Vice Chairman Simon?
Here.
Chairman Bloomfield?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. We have the approval of the agenda. No, we'll do that as we ask. Just bringing that up.
I'd like to approve, or make a motion to approve the agenda, the consent agenda, with item number nine, DR 20-87 PB Bell.
No, no. We just want to pull number 12.
Oh, we're, okay.
Well, let me just explain it this way. We're going to pull, do we have enough, somebody who really wants to speak on 13? Okay. We're going to pull item number 12 off the agenda and move it to the non-consent calendar. And that's the only change. And if you could move to approve it, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, move to approve the agenda is moving item 12 to the non-consent.
Okay.
Second?
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Is that right? Oh, Commissioner Munt, sorry. I have to get it right, thank you. Trying to go by voice and I haven't memorized everybody yet, so. Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda. And a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The Commissioner Board response is limited to criticism, limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Eva, do you need to open it up?
Phone lines, please state your name if you would like to speak on something not on the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to speak?
Okay. All right, doesn't sound like we have anybody. Next, we have a report from Council of the Azon on current events. Commissioner September, or, excuse me, Councilmember September.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. So, tonight I have, my updates are going to be centered around economic development. And our economic development team works very closely with, with our, with our development staff here. A lot of the cases that Planning Commission sees sometime originate, they originate because of our economic development efforts in bringing jobs and new development and growth here to Gilbert. But first, I want to talk about Jennifer Graves. Jennifer Graves is Deputy Director of Economic Development. And she was recently recognized as the Economic Developer of the Year. And that was by the State of Arizona Economic Development Industry Association. So that's a wonderful achievement, and congratulations to Jennifer. And I also want to talk about something that's near and dear to my heart, and that's the economic recovery that the Town of Gilbert has been working on. We, the Council recently approved $18 million in funding for a three-phased Gilbert Together Business Recovery Program. And Phase One is $11 million of business relief grants. But as of Friday, October 30th, the Town of Gilbert staff has worked directly with over 93 companies, and 31 companies have already completed applications for a total of $570,000 in grant awards. And this money is going to these businesses who have been hurt by the financial impact of COVID-19 here in our community. The Phase Two, there's $5 million of business recovery loans that Gilbert is going to be making with our, with our business partners and banks. And then there's Phase Three, which is $2 million of business resiliency that includes technical assistance. And also, training, retraining for jobs for, for people to participate in, to get back into the, into the working environment and working world, perhaps in a different capacity than pre-COVID. Here's some updates on a couple of large businesses that have had some recent activity here in Gilbert. GPMI is a local manufacturer of PPE, and that's cleaning wipes, et cetera. They've recently leased 85,000 square feet at the Gilbert Spectrum.
Councilmember September, we have technical difficulties, and nobody's hearing you outside of this room, so.
Great.
I'm, I'm sorry, we will have to take a break, the computer went down. Thank you, just a moment.
Do you remember where you were, Scott? Or, excuse me, Councilmember September?
Yeah, thanks, I'll just, I'll just wrap it up from where I was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Action. Okay, so, GPMI is a local manufacturer of PPE. They recently leased 85,000 square feet at the Gilbert Spectrum. And they're headquartered here in Gilbert, and this expansion's going to bring 180 additional jobs to Gilbert, and $11 million in capital investment by GPMI. Another one, in my final update, is Lowe's Distribution Center signed a lease for 116,000 square feet at Gilbert Gateway Commerce Center. And they will be moving into that facility in 1Q of 2021. And that's going to bring about $7 million of capital investment into Gilbert. So I just wanted to share some of those updates from our economic development team. They've, they've done a great job here, especially in the middle of a COVID pandemic. They're still moving the needle. And, and since economic development is so closely tied to the development issues, and specifically, some of the applicants and cases that you see here, I thought I would share some of those updates with you. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Councilmember September. It's very good information, appreciate that. Okay, moving on, we have our consent calendar. All items listed below are considered at the public hearing consent calendar. The Commissioner Board may, by a single motion, approve any number of items where, after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item to be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the Commissioner Board may then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. We don't have anything that needs to be moved up, but we have pulled item number 12 off, so the cases on the consent calendar are item number nine, DR 20-87 PB Bell Gilbert Commons. Item number 10, UP 20-05 Alta Gilbert at Cooley Station. Item number 11, DR 20-46 Alta Gilbert at Cooley Station. Item number 13, UP 20-26 Speedway Convenience Fuel Dispensing. Item number 14, UP 20-27 Speedway Convenience 24 Hours Operation. Item number 15, UP 20-28 Speedway Convenience Limited Service Restaurant. Item number 16, DR 20-94 Speedway Convenience. Is there anybody in the audience or that, that wishes to speak on any of these items? Eva, could you open it up?
Will thou open up? The phone lines, please state your name if you wish to speak. Does anybody wish to speak on this item?
The modern day version of, is your refrigerator running, right? Okay. Okay, we don't have any, any other items that need to be, so we'll just, Vice Chair?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve items nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 15, and 16, as read.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Fay, right, second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving along. I guess that means item number 12. Item number 12 is S 20-10 Santania. It's a request to approve a preliminary plat, an open space plan amendment, for a K-Hovnanian home, 71 home, 71 lot development on 40 acres in the south end of town, near highway and Higley Road. And we have Sydney Bethel, who is our planner on this. And I presume that we want to have a presentation from her, and then, and then we have two people who wish to speak on this item, and we'll go to that point. Okay.
Thank you, Chair Bloomfield. Is my presentation available on the screen?
Yes, it is.
All right, perfect. The case before you is S 20-10 Santania. So as the Chair described, the subject site is located at the northwest corner of Higley Road in the Hunt Highway alignment in the Santan character area. It's outlined here in red. It's approximately 40 gross acres, and it's zoned both SF 10 and SF 7 with APAB overlay. The request before you tonight is to approve a preliminary plat and open space plan amendment for K-Bana Homes for 71 home lots on approximately 40 acres. So as I previously stated, this is an amendment to an existing preliminary plat, so I'm just going to walk you through quickly the history. So this was the very first approved preliminary plat back in 2007. You can see that 50 residential home lots were approved. And then, the preliminary plat was then amended again in 2011, to then reflect 80 lots, they increased it to 80 lots. But as you see, as we go through these, the perimeter connections and access points all have remained the same, while the internal portions of the site have maintained the major changes. And then here is our preliminary plat that is before you today. So this has 71 residential lots. So from the 2011 amendment, it is a reduction of nine lots. The primary driver for this amendment is to rearrange the development internally in a manner that ensures that all residential lots are a minimum of 100 feet away from the existing fissures. So as you can see centrally here, I'm actually going to go to the preliminary grading and drainage plan, so you can see the dash lines. There are existing fissures that run throughout this site that have been known since it originally came through in 2007. And you can see here in the dash lines going north, south, and also east, west, so I just wanted to show you. That is why the applicant is coming in today, in order to amend this preliminary plat, to ensure that all homes are at least a minimum of 100 feet away from that fissure area. So this is also an amendment to the open space plan, along with the preliminary plat. So as you can see, the applicant has provided a large amount of trees in this area. In the fissure aerial, you'll note that it is desert-low water landscaping. In order to avoid any type of additional water going into those fissures, there will be specialty drip systems that will go to some of that landscaping in there, but they are providing some natural landscaping. They located all the retention areas, as you can see, away from the fissure areas in order, for that same reason exactly. And I just want to walk through here some of the things that are going to be developed in addition to the lots with this plan. So as you can see, there are quite a few roadways that are going through the development. So the first one I'm going to start with is Watford Court here to the north. So this is going to be a 50-foot right-of-way that's going to be developed with this project, and it will be fully paved. As you can see, it does not connect fully onto Higley Road here. The only access on the Higley Road is located here off of the new drive that they will be creating. This is because the right-of-way was not dedicated for the last remaining parcel back in 2007 along this, so there is not rights to go through here. So the applicant will be providing some bollards in order to ensure that this private drive is not accessed. They also will be developing Constellation Way as an emergency access up into the northern existing road. And then obviously, developing their internal streets here. And then going back to open space, with the open space plan, they do have some monument signage that is included. So I just provided you some images of that monument signage that will also be included in that open space package here. And then this is just an outline of all the walls that will be included throughout the development. This development will not be gated, it will not be a gated community, so the walls provide the perimeter walls for the lots. And here's some example of the different types of theme walls that are going to be seen throughout the development, along with the central mailbox. And then moving on to the preliminary grading and drainage plan, again, this is a great exhibit to show you those fissures there. The retention is proposed in the form of above-ground retention basins located throughout the perimeter of the site, as you can see here more in bold. Offsite flows for Higley Road will be retained at the northeast corner of the property, in accordance with the proposed Higley capital improvement project. So Higley will be improved, but that CIP project is not going to go through for quite a few years, and we have our traffic engineer on the line if you guys would like some additional information on that. The staff is recommending approval of the project, subject to these two conditions, and I am available for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Sydney. Staff, or Commissioners, are there any questions quickly for Sydney on this project? Or shall we just move on to hearing the former two members of the public?
Yeah, actually, Chairman, I do have one.
Oh, please go right ahead.
Sydney, this is Bill Fay again. How, I'm sorry, I'm new to this, I was digging through the regs and I didn't find this. How long is a pre-plat approval good for in Gilbert?
Commissioner Fay, I believe it is three years that is actually good for, but they did record a final plat as well, so that kind of gives longevity to it when they record a final plat, and gives them rights. So that's why it's kind of had a few iterations.
Okay.
Thank you, Sydney. Okay, first, we have Bruce Bauer, who lives in, lives in South Gilbert, close to this. He wishes to speak. Come on up.
Hi, can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
You bet.
All right. My first time doing this, so. So, one of, two concerns, right? My first concern is there's a, a school that's on the other side of Higley Road.
Excuse me, can you please speak into the mic? I can't hear you here. Is this mic on?
Yes, the mic is on. Just needs to be lifted up so he can speak into it a little bit better.
Sorry about that.
Not feel so awkward. There you go.
Okay. So my first concern is there's a, a school that's on the other side of Higley. And there's a lot of traffic that's generated around that school area. A lot of people park on the sides of the roads and things of that nature. And most of the time, they park up and down our neighborhood as well. First, how are we going to stop that, right? To, to keep, prevent any kind of accidents happening in that area? And then, there's a, there's another road that was developed that's cold water, that's just north of us, that ever since they paved it, now became a superhighway. So what I want to do is also prevent that same thing from happening when we, when this development goes in. Because right now, our road is a, it's a paved road, so, or not a paved road, it's a, it's a dirt road, so not too much traffic goes up and down that road. As soon as you pave it, it's going to become a, a superhighway again, where people are going to be exiting from the school and then going into a neighborhood, a neighboring community that's down the street from us. The, the second one is, is as far as traffic routing, right? So it's, the provision shows that in order to exit onto Higley, you can only make a right-hand turn. Most of the, most of the folks in our development use Watford to exit our community and go down Higley, northbound on, on Higley. If we're forced to make a right-hand turn, it then forces us to go down the opposite way, and then there's, there's no way to get out through, I think it's 164th Street or, or Continium or something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I just wanted to note the question for Commissioner Fay. The P-plats expire two years from their effective date unless there's a complete application for a final plat that's been submitted. I think that was your question, correct? Yep. Perfect.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Next, we have Scott Buck, who also wishes to speak. Welcome, Mr. Buck.
Good gentleman. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
So I live at 27, 2878 East Watford Court, which, on this plan here, you'll see, unit, lot 1, 2, 3, and 4 are right in front of me. The concerns I have, there's now going to be a block wall in front of me, and there does not appear to be any limitations of the houses, because in the original proposal, it is my understanding that the developer went down Watford Street, talking to each of the residents, and told them that this plot, this development would be single stories only. Now, as I understand it today, and talking to three neighbors, as well as getting an email from Chuck, Chris Home today, that's no longer the case. He has five different floor plans with three housing elevations. So that means my view of the Santan mountain range, should they put a double, a two-story house in either lot 1, 2, 3, I will lose my scenic view. This will negatively impact the value of my house. As things stand, I will pursue, as this gets approved, pursue it to loss of value of a house, I will claim for diminuization of value as in Article 12-1134 and 12-1136. I've contacted Council today and will pursue it. Additionally, the theme, the primary theme of the black wall in front of my property does not really display what it will look like, other than what it shows in, in the paperwork. I have concerns that that black wall, without sufficient foliage to conceal it, will be of concern, and again, have a negative impact on my property value. I'd ask about- I'd ask about, with Sidney today, if there was an engineering assessment on the ground surface tension of this development with respect to those fissures. There was not one yet handed to me, and I'm curious, given the impact of fissure, the drain off of that pond there for capture basin, and the water in there, that will lead, should the fissure continue on, right towards my property. I'd like to understand what that impact will be. Also, with respect to traffic, because my house is the closest house to Watford, the increased traffic and noise coming down that will impact me. As that being a straight road, and if you put a barrier across at the end, then people will race down that road, noise level and potential car hazards will increase to me. I'd like to know if speed bumps and other considerations will be put in play. And finally, with respect to additional, going out now with that blockage at the end of Watford, over to Coldwater and up to Santan and Higley, that's currently a stop sign there. And the amount of traffic already there today, getting out in the morning or at night during high-peak hours is a challenge. Is Gilbert going to consider putting a light at that corner? And those are all my questions and statements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We will now open it up to the developer. Or, please, is he on virtually?
No, Chairman, we have more members of the public that have noted they wish to speak that are on the WebEx.
Okay.
Just a moment. I have a Kendall McCray. I will be unmuting you. Would you like to speak?
Thank you for letting us jump on here with this craziness and being able to join. I don't have any other concerns or questions, Scott, and the previous gentleman asked the same things that I had, so.
All right. I will now unmute the entire phone line and see if there's anybody else that wishes to speak. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this?
No.
I'm sorry, did somebody state their name?
Right, right.
Thank you for coming in and participating tonight, and let's hear presentation from the applicant.
Sidney, is your applicant available? Mike Lotempio?
Mike should be on the line. Is he not on the line currently from EPS Group? Or Chuck Chrisholm, who is from the development team, K-Hub Homes. Those are me.
Okay, I have Chuck Chrisholm. Let me unmute Chuck. Just a moment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
So I'm Chuck, because I'm with K-Hub Homes, Blue Records, 20830 North State and Boulevard, Phoenix. So I think, I don't have a lot to add other than, from Sidney's presentation. This is a site that was previously zoned, and it was previously platted. The only reason we're here today is actually to reduce the density, and we're doing that because we actually wanted to reconfigure the lots so that they are a minimum of 100 feet away from the center lines of fissures that are on the site. There was a structural, a fissure study done on the site, and the approval was to build homes within 40 feet, I'm sorry, within 20 feet of the fissures. And that's how the original plans that you saw before you were prepared with that setback of 20 feet from the fissures. When we started looking at this property, we felt we'd be more comfortable, just from our buyers, potential buyer standpoint, thinking that they would be more comfortable if they had a little bit more of a buffer area in there, even though, like I said, the professionals that have reviewed this and studied this, the foremost authority on the matter, they have said that a 20-foot buffer is actually that. So anyway, again, just the only reason we're here today is really to reduce the density from what's already approved. And so with that, I guess I'll just stand by for any questions you might have.
Chairman, I also see Michael Lotempio now on the line. May I unmute him? Mr. Lotempio, did you have anything to add?
Hello. Assuming you can hear me okay, I do not at this moment. Chuck, I think, covered some of, any comments on the fissures that I would have added.
The one question, well, Chairman, or, excuse me, Commissioners? Commissioners, are there any questions or concerns that you want to ask, please? Yes.
So, yeah, so Sidney, this is Jan. I have a question for you. The question before us is really that of the site designer, the plat, correct?
Commissioner Simon, that is correct.
So we're not in the process of actually, I would assume we will see the design review come down the road?
Our Commissioner Simon, you will see the standard plans for this down the road. The time in which we have conditioned that certain locations, the single-family home is during a rezoning process with the PAD ordinance.
Okay. And do you know if there's been a traffic study done at Watford and Higley with regards to what type of load this will bear and if it constitutes some type of light or traffic signal change?
Commissioner Simon, there has. We should have Clinton Emery on the line, who can provide some additional details on that traffic study that was completed with this application. I believe the resident was discussing Coldwater, which is located right to the north of this development and Higley, stating that a concern for, if I could show it here on the aerial, for traffic in that area up to the north right here. So there is a future CIP project that will go up and down Higley, so Clint can also provide some additional information if a traffic signal is planted in that area with the CIP improvement in order to alleviate that traffic, and also on the traffic TIA that was completed for our site. Clint's on the line.
Yeah. Done here. So I guess I'll answer the first question about Coldwater and Higley, about the signal, right? Is that the question, the first question?
Yeah.
So there is a, so there actually is a CIP design done for this area. It was done a few years back. So it, and this project is in the CIP, and that includes a signal at that Coldwater and Higley. But currently, it's in the CIP to six to 10 years to be funded and constructed. And as far as traffic study requirement for the Watford, for this development, we required a statement. It, so that just kind of looks at the adjacent access to this location. And so the first gentleman is correct that the main interest into the site will be a right-only. We, the traffic group had a concern with the close proximity of Watford, because Watford already is connected to the school, and so that access is kind of set, and we couldn't change it. So we had concerns about having another full access so close to the school, queuing and other things. The, so, you know, at a traffic perspective, it's not ideal to do U-turns, but yeah, if you want to go north, you'll have to potentially do a U-turn or find other means to go north. It is a legal mover, but like I said, just with the existing constraints at Watford, and in the close proximity, that was what we felt was the best. The AM peak would be the biggest impact on that, and potentially 56 vehicles would be going right, based on estimates, of course.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and so the CIP project will put a median in front of it until the, in the interim, will be, yeah, putting a signage up to control that. And then potentially, like I said, the design's done, but potentially, we can maybe clean up the Watford access at that time, but that's too early to tell.
Thank you, Quentin.
All right. Any Commissioners, any comments, questions? Yes, Commissioner Mike?
Yeah, I'll just make a comment that there's clearly an issue at that intersection. I don't know that it's material to this application or anything I can specifically comment on, but with Payne Elementary there, sandwiched in between, and then Adora Trails, the traffic that's going to be going back and forth through there won't necessarily be contingent upon these homes so much as those within the thousands in Adora Trails that are already existing. But I do want to point out that it's very clearly an issue, because they have a four-way stop there, and when you go down and try to have school pickup or other times at that, you know, 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock time, it's actually quite a pain. And taking a right, you end up on Hunt Highway and heading out. So I just want to at least agree that there is an issue, but from a procedural vantage point, I don't know that it's material to what we would be deciding.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I guess we don't have any more questions, and I'm not sure that the residents who came here tonight got their questions answered directly from the applicant. And I guess I would ask them, Mr. Buck and Mr. Bauer, did you feel like your questions were answered sufficiently?
Chair Bloomfield, I would definitely recommend that we bring the applicant back on so they can discuss if there was an engineering, what type of engineering assessments were completed for the fissure so they can explain that. Our engineering, our development engineering manager, Tom, who I was going to have, provide some additional information, is not available, so I would recommend that they talk about that for the residents.
Okay. Before we do that, I have a question for you, and that is in regard to the two-story. Are there any two-story restrictions on any of these lots?
Chair Bloomfield, no.
Okay. So they're all available to have two stories on them?
Correct.
Okay. And that's a condition of the original plat, not a condition of this one?
There was never a condition that was placed physically in the PAD. So for example, the PAD has like a limit of 80 lots, so there can be no more than 80 lots on there, but there was not a limit for two-story. So it may in the past been something that was an agreement between the developers and the residents that was not included in our documents, but we do not have any record of a restriction.
Okay. All right. If we could bring the applicant back up and address, oh, the applicant, yeah. We want the applicant to be brought forward and address specific comments and questions that the citizens put forward for them.
Mr. Lotempio, I believe that you could speak at this time?
Yes, the fissures, I can certainly elaborate on that a little more. I don't have the actual document in front of me, so I can't go over anything verbatim in it, but I guess to, the first point that Chuck made is the recommended distance in that, in that study that was done by a licensed geotechnical engineer, was the 20 feet on each side, and that was the minimum that they were looking for with a safety factor in order to not create any, any problems with those fissures. We increased that, as Chuck said, to 100 feet, to be more comfortable with the separation and not, excuse me, not creating any potential problems with the fissures. I can say, being familiar with that report, that one, one thing noted in that report was, over a number of years, and I don't remember the number of years, that those fissures have not expanded at all. And that is most likely due to groundwater in the area, the groundwater table being stabilized. The fissures are created due to pumping of well water usually. So with a stable, stable water table, those fissures are in, I believe it's called, I forgot the technical term for it, but are not growing and not expanding, and that's based on observations over a number of years with the geotechnical engineer. He did one study early 2000s, I believe, and updated it several years after that, and had his observations of the changes in those fissures documented with no major changes. So the approach, as well as providing a buffer from those fissures, is to, design approach, at least for mitigation, would be to excavate a depth down around those fissures, reinforce the soil with geotextile, and then backfill compact to seal up those fissures, the surface part of them, in order to, preventing any kind of expansion. Also, water on this site is being directed away from it. There is no retention basins within that 100 feet. We have drainage swales along the setback areas to direct the water away from the fissure and to the drainage basins, so water isn't going to be entering those fissure areas as well, which could cause a problem. So we, the geotechnical engineer and myself, our company is the civil engineer and also the planner, landscape architect for the project, we work together to, I think, come up with a plan and with K-Hub to come up with a layout that could best, best develop the site in the safest way possible, given the fissures there. In our opinion, we think it's safer than the original design back in 2008, due to the decreased density and increased setback from the fissures. I hope that helps kind of clear up a little bit of what we've been doing, that report. I'm not sure if it can be, I believe the city or town has it somewhere, so it could probably be released through a public records request if anyone was interested in reviewing it.
Okay. I have one more question that seemed to never get answered, and that was in regard to that retention basin that's right next to those lots. Mr. Buck, his home was directly north of that, and he's concerned about if that fills up in a 100-degree event, where does it overflow and go to, as he doesn't want it in his yard. Is that fair enough, Mr. Buck? Is that fair enough, Mr. Buck?
The tension in that, the surface tension is going to change instead of developing. If they're projecting things that really have to especially in 2008, I'd like to see more, especially today, near Adora, as they publicly publicize the challenges of fissures in that Santa Ana mountain area, watching off the coast of them. I'm concerned that that's going to change, and I'd like to see some more, especially today, near Adora, as they publicly publicize the challenges of fissures in that Santa Ana mountain area, watching off the coast of them. I'm concerned that that's going to change. And I'd like to see some more.
Okay. I'm not sure that I understand that, other than, I'm a civil engineer, I'm a developer, I'm a development civil engineer, I understand everything that's, I understand these issues very well, and I think I heard surface tension, you're saying the soils being shifted and different loadings on the soils, and how is that going to affect around?
Excuse me, sir, if you could speak to the microphone, just because members of the public on WebEx cannot hear your comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, with respect to that reservoir, that retention area, will now hold this water?
It's not going to, it's not going to hold it within the fissures.
No, 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 it's in the retaining ponds, right?
Right.
And if you look at that retaining pond that's right adjacent to my lot, that fissure from that point is roughly 100 feet. Now, the surface tension of that ground, if it is with respect to water table level, how will that impact that fissure's growth? Will it? I don't know. What I would like to have done is seen the original port, it says from 2008. If I had the original port, I'd worked with some ASU faculty to see what that would do. I mean, have a better understanding for myself. I don't know. That's why I would relate to faculty at ASU to understand. I do a lot of work at ASU, and I have a number of faculty who are over there to help me with this.
Okay. We'll let you, we'll let you pursue that with a developer. Okay. That's, that's going to be outside the purview of what we're doing, and my guess is that you'll find that it won't have an issue. That would be my guess. I'm just going to venture it out there. Eva?
Chairman, we also have Tom Condit on the line. I don't know if Tom wishes to speak on this?
Sure.
Yes, thank you so much for the question, and I just want to say that this design that QuabManian is bringing forward is actually moves that retention area, keeps it, keeps it 100 feet away from the fissure, which is in line exactly with the recommendations that are provided in the 2011 geotechnical report that they provided to the town, and that is why we support it. We believe that this is a reasonable, that they've made a reasonable accommodation to keep water away from the fissures, and that was part of the reason that the plat is designed this way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Condit. We appreciate that. Okay. I think all the questions have been addressed, at least, maybe not answered to your satisfaction, but I think they've all been touched on. Is that correct? Mr. Buck?
The only remaining one was the black wall, right? What, with that primary black wall right there, what is foliage, or how do you break that up with respect to my lot being so close? I'll either see black wall or what, especially going with the two-story house there, I lose view of the Santa Ana mountain. Neither one of those questions were really...
Those homes are going to be fronting to you. There won't be a, there won't be a wall there. You'll see the front of a house. Is that right?
No.
Or am I reading it correctly?
Chair, no.
Okay.
I apologize.
It could. They should just flip it around. You'd see the, you'd see the front face. You'd like that better, right?
Yeah, if they're flipped where we're seeing it, it'd be more aesthetic to my property than having a black wall there. If they're going to put a black wall there, then I'd like to have a little bit of a buffer zone with foliage there to help disguise the black wall.
They're, they're required to do that. I mean, it's, it's part of the, because you're going to have, you're going to have the wall, you're going to have the roadway, and the curb won't go all the way to the right-of-way, and they can't build within the right-of-way. So the block wall will actually be offset from the right-of-way, there'd be a landscape easement there, is that right? Am I speaking out of turn?
That is correct, Chair. I'm displaying the open space plan on here, so as you can see, the end of the lots end at yellow, so I'm pointing out Lot 1 here, if you can see it, and then you can see that there's a landscape tract, and then that includes trees, and it'll also include some shrubbery that are not included on this plan due to large scale. You can see all the shrubs and accents are displayed here, but they're not included in this plan due to the large scale of the development. But it will include a landscape tract, and then it will have the block wall that will be right beyond that where the back of the residential, so it will, as you stated, have a landscape tract that will be fully landscaped with trees and ground coverage before the block wall.
Okay. So you're getting a paved road, you're getting landscaping that's maintained by somebody else, and a block wall.
My last concern would be the view. If the two-story house goes into 1, 2, and 3, then pursuant of...
You can buy those lots. They have a right to be, the ability to build there.
Yeah.
You can buy them, and you can keep that open.
Well, no, it had to be developed, right?
No, it doesn't have to be. You can just buy them. You don't have to build a home on them.
Okay.
If you want to maintain that. That's, that's their right as, as the property owner, to be able to build on them. There's no restriction on the two-story.
I just want to say that, I apologize for interrupting so many times, but I just want to provide the information that for both zoning districts, the maximum height is 30 feet, and it is limited at two stories per SF-7 and per SF-10. So the maximum height again is 30 feet, and it is limited at two stories for the zoning districts, just to provide that information out there. Apologize again for the interruptions.
No worries. Thank you. Okay, I think we've got it. Anybody want to make a motion? Unless you want to discuss it more up here? Close the hearing?
I can go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you.
I'm wishing to recommend approval of S-20-10 Santa Nilla.
Anybody who's second? Second, Mike, Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to item number 17, DR-19-128 Trilogy at Power Ranch. Ashley McDonald.
Thank you, Chairman. Let me get my presentation started. Okay, Chair, are you able to see my presentation?
Yes, Ashley.
Okay, thank you. So as you said, this is DR-19-128 Trilogy at Power Ranch. The site is located south of Queen Creek Road between Wrecker and Power Road. This is a portion of the larger Power Ranch PAD. This section here, south of Queen Creek, is Trilogy at Power Ranch, which is their adult complex. The subject site is highlighted in red at the center, so as you head down South Ridge House Parkway, enter into their community facilities, and that is where the pickleball courts are located. So looking at the aerial photograph and zooming in specifically to those courts, you can see that the existing condition has two courts on our right of that primary entrance into the clubhouse facilities. On the east side of the entrance, there are currently two courts that were originally planned as tennis courts, but with the popularity of pickleball, they were restripped to allow for a total of eight pickleball courts on those easternmost courts. And then on the west side of Ranch House Parkway, there are two existing tennis courts. So this is current conditions. Just as an overview, the overall site is 5.74 acres, and again, that is a portion of the Power Ranch PAD. The zoning on the site is our public facilities institutional zoning district, and we recall that earlier this year, the applicant processed the PAD overlay in order to reduce the front and west setbacks for both the building and the state from 2015. That was approved by the planning commission and town council. And then this project specifically, this DR-19-128, which will add and reconfigure courts, have reference buildings, they have shade structures for the facility. As you can see on the overall site plan, the proposed courts are part of the larger community facilities, with the facility buildings located south of the existing parking lot. I'll also note that the parking field went through a renovation in 2016 or 2017, I can't recall when the construction was actually completed, but that was after receiving approval of an administrative use permit to modify parking requirements. Through this process, the applicant's engineer evaluated parking demand on site, where the result was a reduction of 20 acre spaces, but 42 golf cart spaces were provided in return. The courts themselves did not generate additional parking requirement, and so no further modifications to the parking lot is proposed. I just wanted to make that note as we look through this proposal. Okay, and then zooming into the courts themselves, there are just a couple of items that I wanted to point out. On the far east side, you can see the red line, and that is a proposed sound wall that's intended to help reduce the impact of the pickleball. The area is shown in yellow, so if you can follow my mouse. This structure here on the southeast, and then this one here on the southwest, those are the reference buildings that are being added. And then on the pickleball court side, there's this long linear structure here, and then a smaller one on the tennis court side, and those are shade structures just to provide some view for the players as they either observe or wait to play. At the study session, the commission asked for additional information on current conditions, so I wanted to just take a moment to talk about the location of the existing courts and proximity to residential lots. Under current conditions, the nearest court to the front setback is 25 feet, and just as a reminder, I know I already covered it, but the applicant did receive approval to reduce that setback to 10 feet, so the proposed reconfiguration applies with that standard. And then on the east side, the minimum requirement is 25 feet. Current conditions, the court is located about 62 feet from the residential property boundary. With the proposed reconfiguration, the wall is about 59, 60 feet from the residential property boundary, with the nearest court being 73 feet. And then on the west side, the setback is reduced to 23 feet from the current 25, and then again, that was permitted to be as close as 10 feet from the PAD amendment. Another item of concern that staff worked for residents as this has gone through the process was the increased traffic. So based on this concern, our assistant community traffic engineer visited the site and prepared a quiz, mine of site analysis that I'm showing on this screen. And based on his analysis, we added conditions to the design review that required the relocation of the stop bar in that, as you had worked on Ranch House Parkway, we've added a condition requiring that they add a missing hallway sign that you can see here on the bottom right of the exhibit. Under the stop setting, and then there's some recommendations or some requirements for landscape modifications. And then he also noted that this is a hallway stop, which mitigates our concerns about the amount of traffic to the site, but I just wanted to touch on that because it was an item of concern for the residents, so we made sure to take a quick look at that. In terms of landscaping, there are obviously modifications to the landscaping with the addition of the courts. It is still in compliance with the minimum requirements for landscaping, and the total, the total acreage for the facility still provides well and accessible to required, and the current things that are being installed are in compliance and consistent with the previous outfit of the day, so the addition of red push pastash trees, red yucca, yellow bells, and then turf is being removed, but you can see right at the corner, there's artificial turf being added just for, just for the appearance. In terms of the sound wall, I wanted to make sure that we touched on that as well, so here I see the elevation of that, you can see that they're using a stone veneer on the bottom portion of the wall, so that it's just a very tall and attractive wall. And that serves as an anchor for the camper area, so there would be landscaping as well. One of the questions that came up at the study session hearing as well was whether or not there would be a screen, a windscreen around the tennis courts, and the applicant has provided the specific showing that there would be a windscreen at those courts as well. In terms of the elevations of those reference buildings, it is consistent with the colors and materials used for the rest of the clubhouse facilities, so staff is comfortable with this moving forward and just consistency in the design and colors and materials. Same with the fabric shade canopy, the question that came up at the study session, that the applicant has provided some information and exhibits that the fabric shade canopy is consistent with what they have at the Fairbox and all area and some other facilities within Trilogy. In terms of public participation, the applicant has held a number of neighborhood meetings, two specifically that staff attended, and made some steps to put one back for this. And what we've heard of those meetings was there was questions about phase and about noise, sound wall, setback changes. For this application specifically, in your staff report, there are a total of 24 comments included, and I sent out an addendum that you should have received yesterday. And then since that addendum went out, there were three additional letters sent to the planning commission that were uploaded into your drop box, so I just want to make sure that we point those out for the record, and that additional letters were submitted by Jean Bob Hartley and Robert McHippin. We also received card cards. No specific comments are provided on those, just read it on the support board against the proposal, there were a total of 16 against the proposal, the actual of 17, for the proposal that has come in over the past couple of days. With that, staff does recommend approval of DR-19-28 with the recommended conditions in the staff report, hopefully the answer to questions that you see in the applicant, I know has a presentation.
Thank you, Ashley, for that very thorough report, and for bringing us up to speed on what's going on with this project that we've heard a couple of times before. I understand, do we have anybody that wants, wishes to speak? Welcome, Mr. Bauer. Glad to see you tonight.
Thank you, Chairman. Adam Baugh with you on behalf of Trilogy Community Association. I have a brief presentation. I think Ashley will bring it up for me. Thank you, Ashley, and I'll just say next, and then we'll know when to go to the next slide. Perfect. Okay, so when we presented this case back in July, this committee recommended unanimously to approve the PAD amendment. There's been a little bit of changeover. Four present members were part of this decision back then, so for the sake of familiarity, I won't spend much time, but touch base on a couple of things worth repeating. Ashley, next slide. Pickleball is an incredible and important part of this community. For an age-restricted community, it's important to be relevant and provide first-class amenities, particularly with some of the newer age-restricted communities that are coming in Eastmark, which is direct competition with this. The best way to retain your property values is to have an amenity that is modern and relevant with today's uses. So pickleball, and the demand for pickleball has drastically increased, and when this used started happening in 2014, Donald Trump was just a celebrity apprentice. This is long before what we have today, and this has been going on for now six years of pickleball play on this court. Let's go to the next slide. We can skip through this one quickly, but I'll just tell you, back in July, this committee recommended approval so we could adjust our setbacks adjacent to the street. So here's the area where pickleball is currently played today, and regardless of whatever decision is made, pickleball will still be played on these courts today, and presently, these courts, which are tennis courts, are also adapted for pickleball. There's eight pickleball courts that fit in these present tennis courts today, and those courts have been played since 2014. Next. When you saw this in July, we were proposing a change. We were going to add two, we were going to add six pickleball courts, which are the two blocks on the east side, and there was going to be a multi-use court, that's that yellow block right there, and that multi-use court would also allow four additional pickleball courts. So in theory, when we presented this case in July, there would have been a total opportunity for 10 pickleball courts on the east side. After that meeting, I felt like there was an opportunity to work together with some of our neighbors on their eastern side, to find maybe perhaps a compromise and some plan changes that would benefit both parties. And so after that, we began to do some outreach. We'll go to the next slide. It's hard to see here, but hopefully you might have a better picture on your computer screen, but that hearing was on July 1, and shortly thereafter, I had a chance to follow up with the adjacent neighbor, and he was very accommodating, and helped arrange a meeting with me and four or five of his adjacent neighbors that are on our east side. So we met with him on July 14, and it was really just a chance for me to listen and to hear their concerns, and then to take that back and figure out what ways can we retool this plan. take that back and figure out what ways can we retool this plan. Spent some time with the engineering folks on our side to come up with the plan that incorporated some of the feedbacks. So back towards August, we started to reintroduce a modified plan that pulled our courts off a little bit further from the property line, and even particularly one court, an additional 10 feet or so. In that meeting, the second meeting, we could sit down and introduce that plan, and we got additional feedback. And that additional feedback added seven new ideas, things like restrictions on the time of use, restrictions on the lighting, restrictions on car parking, even restrictions on the seating and where they could be located, and even requesting that these courts be moved further away. Those are things that I think Trilogy, the board community evaluated and decided that it was worth working together to solve that. So as a result, we came up with the idea that we would document this into an agreement. And so that agreement was written, I prepared it per the terms in the discussion we had with the neighbors, and the Trilogy Board community scheduled for a special meeting so they could vote on this agreement. Agreement was sent back to the neighbors, and unfortunately, between the time we agreed on those terms in the House to the time of the meeting, there had been, I think, some second thoughts on their side. And so unfortunately, what we thought we might had agreement in place fell apart, and so we came back to a plan, but a plan that's still better and improved upon than the one you saw in July. So let me show you on the next slide. Did we skip one back, Ashley? No, I guess we didn't. So we'll go forward to the next slide. What this new plan does, there you go. What this new plan does is it removes the multi-use court that was previously shown at the entranceway. And by removing that multi-use court there, we've eliminated four potential pickleball courts. We've now will have only eight pickleball on the east side rather than the 10 that were previously considered. Ashley, if you go back one slide. Three tennis courts on the west, eight pickleball courts on the east side. These pickleball courts are designed per the dimensions required for this sport. It includes the dimensions for netting, overrun areas as well, and also sufficient areas for viewing, viewing in a way that's tucked between the two courts rather than on the east side. We've also incorporated and still continue to have the sound wall, and atop that sound wall, a hedge that hopefully will grow taller than, that will provide additional height beyond that eight feet proposed. Okay, we'll go to the next slide and the next one after that. So these are the changes. We removed that multi-use court. We shifted that pickleball court further away from the area. So on the prior plan that you saw in July, it was about 61 feet from the court edge to the residence wall, and now we are 73 feet. So we moved it about an additional 12 feet. And then additionally, when we moved Court Four a little bit further away with an extra 10-foot gap from the sound wall as well. And by so doing that change, we've reduced the total amount of pickleball courts from potentially 10 down to eight, and that allows us to have more open space at the entry point in Ramada, so as you drive in, you see a more proper and appropriate landscape setting entering to the community area. I don't think I need to spend much time covering landscaping, but I think Ashley did a good job. We'll go to the next one. You've seen this in your packet, but this is the imagery of the viewing area and the accessory building. I think you've seen this already in the prior presentation, so I think we'll wrap it up with our summary slide, which should be just after this. Oh, excuse me, forgive me for jumping ahead too soon. The noise considerations. Yes, I certainly understand that that's a consideration that you've seen and evaluated in this case, and I think that's one you've dealt with before. It's worth highlighting that there simply is just a difference in opinion between the town's ordinance and our observation of that versus some of the neighbors who believe we will play differently. At the end of the day, what matters here is what the town ordinance requires. The town ordinance simply has a measurement tool that's a 55 decibel level measured inside a house with the doors and the windows closed. That's the standard by which the town judges noise. And in this case, we satisfy that standard. Next slide. It's also worth highlighting that this is next to a tennis court where there's also a golf tee box, the other components related to the recreational amenities, and a fairway. So there's quite a bit of other noises that occur in that area. We did have a noise study. You've seen it before. It's been presented before you, so I'll save you the time, but I do have our acoustic engineer here who can answer some of those specific questions if you are interested. We'll go to our next slide. With regard to lighting, I know it was a pretty important consideration when we came to planning commission in July. I want to make clear that our photometric study observes the town ordinance standards. Our lighting complies at the property line level as expected with any development next to residential. I think another concern I heard is that somehow we were going to be reducing parking. Under this plan, we observe parking. We also have sufficient spaces for 42 golf carts, which is a primary way that people in this community transport and commute within it. The shade canopies that we'll be adding match the shade canopies that are presently there today. And at the end of the day, I think this is a pretty good summary. For this community to be vibrant, maintain its property values, to attract new and future residents, pickleball is just another amenity that's been playing there for six years that will be better optimized under this new plan. It has been some improvements. We've reduced the number of courts. We pushed this a little bit further away. We do have the sound wall, and we observe all the other requirements for design and engineering aspects that the town considers when evaluating this request. It's important that staff recommendation is the support, and we also have some few members of the community here as well. I think when I looked at the opposition versus the support in July, it was significantly overwhelmingly in support, and I don't think that's changed one bit, although clearly in a pandemic, the ability for people to participate remotely is different than what you can see here in this room. But if you're interested, we also have people from the community who are, have cards ready to speak only if necessary. And I'll end my presentation and happy to take any questions that you might have.
Okay. Commissioners, on this case, do you have any questions or concerns? No? No one? Okay. Commissioner Faye.
Yes, Mr. Baugh. The homeowners did a noise study of their own, didn't they?
No, they did not.
They didn't? I thought we had from a Dr. Willis that was attached also.
What they did is a noise estimation.
That's correct. They did a noise estimation. They didn't do a study because they didn't go on site, right?
Correct.
Why weren't they, why didn't they go on site?
Well, that's a question that I'm glad you asked. They requested to do a noise study when Trilogy was hosting an event for Gilbert firefighters on the property. The community association requested they would not be proper to do a noise study at a time, but to do it at another time, and to please request that invitation to do so. They've never requested opportunity to come back to perform that study since.
Because I read in the packet that it said the Trilogy, your group, your board, said if Mr. Willis or Dr. Willis went on the property, you were going to have him arrested for trespassing. Is that correct?
That statement is correct.
Why would you do that if you're not trying to manipulate the data?
Not trying to manipulate the data. When they preferred to do the noise study was when they were doing a fundraising event, which would be a skewed study, unfortunately, because that's not the regular time and course of play.
I agree with you. If you do it during sirens running, but that's something you could point out right here. You could have put that in your presentation, that this Dr. Willis's study is a mess because he did it next to a fire truck or during a fundraising. You actually prevented him altogether from doing any study.
Commissioner Faye, I don't think that's an accurate statement, but rather than me explain it, how about I bring up the board member who helped participate before my involvement in that case? They can explain the invitation they extended to them to come back and perform that study at a more appropriate time. Wayne, would you like to come?
Address is 4695 East Narrow Leaf Drive, Gilbert. Commissioner, very specifically, we stated in the letter to Dr. Willis, "The association will be happy to arrange a date and time for testing to occur, but this charity event for local firefighters is simply not the forum." We were more than happy to have him. We offered multiple times. We even brought it up when we had our open meetings, that he attended, that we would be happy to do that, but he never came back to the board at all requesting the opportunity to have any measurements taken.
So the issue in the packet, the issue in some of the public comment, is that if he has to do it at your invitation, he has to do it in a circumstance that's under your control. I agree, you don't want him doing it during a fundraising or during a meteor storm or when there's sirens going off, but you could easily point out again that if he did that, that it's a defective study. What would be the problem with him going on his own time, taking things that are not, and remove the possibility that you're manipulating the data? I'm not saying you are manipulating it, but at least right now, if you, if he can only go when you're inviting him, you open the door to the argument that the reason you're doing that is to control when he can take measurements.
No, we offered to have him come whenever he would like, except that day. We were willing to have him there. In fact, his initial responses to the study that was done, when we asked him, had he taken any measurements, he said no, because we had a conference call with him beforehand. He had never taken any measurements at all when we first started this process.
So he could come back anytime, except just not during the party?
Just not during the time we were doing the charity event for the Gilbert and Queen Creek Fire Departments? That's correct.
And the statement that he was going to be arrested for trespassing only applied to if he came to the charity event?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, that's different than the way it was portrayed in the...
There's multiple things that were portrayed differently.
Okay, that's what you're, that's what I'm questioning, interrogating you, questioning you about.
That's fine.
Thank you. That answers my, that answers my question.
Thank you, Commissioner Faye. And thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other comments, questions? Oh, Commissioner Munt.
Thank you, Chairman. I honestly do not want to beat this dead horse, but I do want to understand one thing, and maybe since I understand there is an acoustics engineer in the House. Why exactly, if we're talking about noise that's happening at people's homes, is it even important to be on the courts? If you were looking to portray that in my home, I'm having far too much noise during this, wouldn't it stand to reason that you would simply go to a person's home during this event and do readings? So I just want to point that out that while we're running through this, that I'm very confused at the fact that what in the world it matters, what the noise is directly on the court versus in a home. So that doesn't make sense to me.
I think that's what our noise ordinance specifies, is that it's in a home with the windows closed, and that's the noise level that it is. So that's, that's the ordinance that we're adhering against. Okay. Commissioner Simon.
Yeah, I've questioned, and this may be for Mr. Baugh, I'm not sure. Isn't my understanding that there's already pickleball happening, and there's already eight courts being played? So really, alls we're doing is we're adjusting the position of those courts. Nothing else is changing.
Well, there's a sound wall.
In its simplest form, yes. There's eight courts presently today, there's eight courts once it's approved. We're rearranging the open space and the access to that, but if you boil it down to, it's eight courts today, it's eight courts if it's approved.
So theoretically, the sound is not changing, but we're making steps, or you're making steps to reduce the sound that's already there.
Yes, with the sound wall that we'll be adding, and shifting some of our courts a little bit further away than where they are presently today, our courts will be further once it's approved.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any questions, any further questions for staff or for members of the public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing in public discussion.
Chair, I think you have to open it up to the public and see if there's any residents that want to address us.
Please do that. Eva, I take it back.
Okay. Do you have any comment cards from anybody?
I don't.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address the commission?
Mr. Myel, President, if you have a comment.
Yes.
Been a long haul, hasn't it? Probably sick to death of us, and I apologize for that. My name's Ian Welsh, the Executive Director of Trilogy at Power Ranch. I've been at Power Ranch since 2010. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for reading through the COBIUS documentation, not only that that was presented from the Trilogy Board of Directors, management, and our plethora of consultants, but all those from our concerned residents, which unfortunately, some of it is not accurate. We'll leave that for another day. But coming from a background of tennis, and I made a living out of tennis for my first 20 years of my career, and I fell into this crazy industry of managing C A community associations, I would like to point out that what we're doing on the east side, and pickleball has been played there since 2012, the courts are deteriorated to the point of no return. They have to be replaced with an upmarket post-tension concrete surface. They were laid on a subsurface asphalt. They were then converted to synthetic grass. That didn't work. They were then converted to a rubberized surface. That didn't work. It's now time for the Board of Directors of the community to bite the bullet and put down a state-of-the-art tennis and pickleball amenity with some bathroom facilities. Access to bathrooms on the east side for the pickleball players and tennis players is non-existent. They actually sneak over into the private restaurant called Slade Pistro when they need to use the restroom. So that's just not appropriate. But what we're actually doing also on this east side, right now, we have eight pickleball courts bundled on two tennis courts. They are not the exact size that you would build if you would build an individual tennis, individual pickleball court. And that's what we've done. We are building eight state-of-the-art pickleball courts that are separate, and we are actually dispersing somewhat the density of play, because instead of having eight pickleball courts all on two tennis courts, we now have eight individual pickleball courts, and we are moving them further to the west. So, and we have not done a sound study on that. I don't believe we do need to do a sound study on that. But your comment on the noise abatement in the home is exactly correct. This Board of Directors and the community, the pickleball club, and 75-plus percent of the community need, want, and have supported this amenity, and I look forward and hope for a favorable response tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate that insight.
Chairman, we have a few people that are on the line that would all wish to speak. The first person is Scott Bitner. Let me unmute Mr. Bitner.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Scott Bitner, 4461 East Sycamore Drive. I represent myself, as a property owner, and the concerned neighbors of Trilogy. This entire issue has been debated with power struggles and egos. Let me be perfectly clear. Trilogy not only wants, but it needs to expand the pickleball courts, however, not under this plan. The following comments I make pertain to the narrative to the Trilogy Plan Proposal. Yes, an alternative plan was submitted by the neighbors and rejected by the Board of Directors for good cause. However, what was omitted was that there was another plan that was submitted that corrected these shortcomings. For four and a half years, the director and the board has refused to have a sit-down face-to-face meeting. Instead, they sent their attorney. He presented a new plan, the one that's before you. It would move the courts much closer, we were, or I'm sorry, it would move the courts further. We were excited until our advisor, Dr. Lance Willis, a nationally-recognized expert in pickleball sound and abatement, said it would have little impact. Additionally, the plan has created two more dedicated courts to which would exacerbate the problem. The plan came with a legal agreement that we would require us to drop all current and future objections. We were given four and a half days to respond. After four and a half years, we get four and a half days? We had no choice but to reject that contract. Splitting the courts between the parking lots is a viable solution. The objections to this are a veiled safety concern crossing the parking lot. I have never heard anyone say, "I won't go to my favorite restaurant, I won't go to the grocery store, or I won't go to the house of worship because I don't want to cross the parking lot." the parking lot." Commissioners, these are not elementary school children crossing the 2002 to get to the playground. Sound is the greatest concern. I am sure MD Acoustics, that conducted the sound test, is a fine term. However, it appears that they have relieved themselves from any liability. In their very own documentation, it states, "We did not, nor were we hired, to measure the impulse sound of the paddle against the ball. This is the loudest and most objectionable noise that will violate the Town's Code pertaining to decibels." Additionally, MD states that the sounds inside the adjacent homes will be similar to that of a ping-pong table in an adjoining room. Can you imagine trying to watch television, reading a book, have a conversation, or try to sleep with an average of 29 paddle strikes per minute on each court? This will absolutely violate the Town's nuisance sound ordinance.
Okay.
To my knowledge, MD has never retracted, denied, or amended their statement. In conclusion, the Town of Gilbert is a gem in the crown of Arizona. Hundreds of cities have exactly the same ordinances and codes. The reason Gilbert stands high is that you, the commissioners, have employed common sense into your decision-making process. I ask that you use this common sense this evening to protect and provide and exercise your charge not to diminish the quality of life of residents, and not to bend to the wishes of our sports club. Thank you, and I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Eva, is there anybody else?
There is. The next person who wishes to speak is Rocky Hessen. Mr. Hessen, I will unmute you.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Rocky Hessen, and I'm a resident here within Trilogy. I've been involved in this community for the past 19 years. I assisted my parents in the purchase of a retirement home here, and my wife and I moved in shortly thereafter. I've been very active in the community, and I'm very familiar with all the issues that we've been dealing with over the years. The gentleman on, the commissioner that brought the issue up with regard to the fundraising of the tournament, I'd like to address that very quickly, if I may. The Board contacted me, I was in charge of that tournament. I was contacted by the Queen Creek Fire Department, Jason Pridey, Fire Captain, and his wife, Brenda, asked if we'd be interested in hosting a tournament to raise money for fallen firefighters, as well as some of their children's sports programs, and they said, "Absolutely, we'll do that." The Board contacted me and asked me if I'd be willing to let them do some sound measurements during that tournament, and I requested to the Board that I'd prefer not to do it the day of the tournament, but I'll fill the courts up for you the next day or any day with pickleball players. I had firefighters, 400 firefighters represented from not just Gilbert, or Queen Creek and Gilbert, but Tempe, Scottsdale, Phoenix, and many of the other communities. We had trucks out there, birthday cars, concessions, all kinds of stuff going on. We had 30 kids playing street hockey in the parking lot. It was a great event, we made about $5,000 in a matter of four hours. They wanted to take the measurements during that period of time, because they knew that, and I know some of the players on, in opposition, and I knew they were trying to take advantage of that. And I says, "Please, let's not do this during the fundraiser, come out tomorrow, and I'll fill the courts up with you guys." So, I just wanted to say that I knew, that was a disingenuous move, I felt, on their part, and I told the Board, who asked me if I'd be willing to let them do that, and I requested that they not, so that's all I had to say about with regard to that fundraiser, and them, and our, to them not coming out on that particular day. Over.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I may continue, I've been involved in this community for a long time. Our current Board, as well as their predecessors, have done a great job at this, maintaining this community, improving all the amenities for the benefit of the residents. It's a great place to live, and it gets better every year. Home selling this community within a matter of days, if not hours. We have a small group of residents that I'm sure are very fine folks. In fact, I know a few of them, and they are fine folks. However, they are very critical of everything this Board has done over the years, not just this Board, but previous Boards. Every improvement or renovation to include the fitness center, repairing the pool of exercises, remodeling our ballroom, installing new audiovisual systems in the remodeled ballroom, the new parking lot, landscaping, I could go on and on, comes with a ton of criticism, and it's always the same few people, and you have correspondence from them. They now have this next-door social media platform, and they continue to publicly criticize our elected volunteers. It's the same with the Sports Courts Project. Our Board has been working on this for the past four or more years. Our Board has held several informational exchanges with the residents over the years on this project. The Gilbert Town Council has attended one that I know of and witnessed, and the majority of the residents that were in attendance were in favor of the project.
Sir, could we get you to make your closing statement? You've passed your three minutes.
Our Board has been very receptive to the few concerns from homeowners, and has met personally with them. They made adjustments to further mitigate homeowners' concerns, and those adjustments are included in this final site plan. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for all the service to the Town of Gilbert, which continues to be nationally-recognized as a great place to live and its family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eva, is there anybody else?
I believe there is. I see two more names with hands raised. Let me check. Lance Willis, I will unmute you. Is it this, this application you wish to speak on?
Yes.
Lance, can we give you two minutes? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay.
You say you're going to give me two minutes, or you need the two minutes? I'm sorry.
We're going to give you two minutes to speak.
Oh, can I have a little bit longer? I need to address a few things that have been said in regard to my noise study.
Okay, I'll give you three. That's typical.
Okay, thanks. I'll go ahead and start then. I'm Dr. Lance Willis. I'm a Principal Acoustical Engineer for Spenderian and Willis Acoustics and Noise Control in Tucson. Of course, I've been asked to make some comments by the concerned neighbors in regard to the noise issue for the proposed pickleball courts. I've submitted a letter dated October 22nd this year detailing issues with the proposed plan. I don't, it doesn't sound like the commission has had a chance to review it. I hope they'll take time to read and understand it in its entirety. I have a PhD in Physical and Engineering Acoustics, 15 years' experience in consulting in environmental acoustics and noise control, and I have 10 years' experience specifically creating noise abatement plans for pickleball courts. In that time, I have never seen pickleball courts placed this close to single-family homes that did not generate noise complaints, with or without a sound wall. From my first involvement in this project, I've said that this is a challenging site to integrate pickleball into. There are a lot of activities planned for a very small area. However, I've also said from the beginning, there's a way to plan the site for pickleball such that there's minimal noise impact for the surrounding homes. A key part of achieving this goal is to move the loudest activity at the sports center away from the noise-sensitive areas. A sound wall can only do so much, buffer distance is critical. The main concern in regard to noise from the pickleball courts is the impulsive sound produced by the impact of the hard plastic ball on the paddles. This component of the sound has not been addressed by the noise impact studies prepared by Trilogy and MD Acoustics in planning for the sports courts improvements. This has been confirmed in a letter from MD Acoustics dated July 9, 2019, and I'll quote from that letter. "MD was not hired to measure the impulsive sound of pickleball paddle impacts, nor was MD hired to predict community response to impulsive sound," end quote. As a result, pickleball courts have been located too close to homes on the east and north sides of the proposed courts. Since the impulsive component of the sound and the directionality of the paddle impacts has not been considered, the limited sound wall planned along the east side of the courts will not provide sufficient shielding to homes to the east and north. The analysis by MD Acoustics has focused on Section 42-61E of the Gilbert Town Code, but it has ignored Section 42-64. And I'll read part of that. Quote, "Notwithstanding any other provision in this chapter, and in addition thereto, it shall be unlawful for any person without justification to make or continue or cause or permit to be made or continued any unnecessary, excessive, or offensive noise which disturbs the peace or quiet of any neighborhood, or which causes discomfort or annoyance to any reasonable person of normal sensitiveness residing in the area." And I'm going to draw your attention to the term annoyance in Section 42-64A. In the field of environmental acoustics and noise control, this term has a specific and quantifiable meaning. It would have been chosen by the code office for that reason.
Mr. Willis.
Section, Section B of the Town Code goes on to require, I'm sorry? Someone trying to say something?
Your three minutes are up, so if you want to wrap up in a sentence or two, that would be fine.
Okay. Section 42-64B of the Code requires that the impulsiveness of the sound must be considered in determining whether it's usable. This has not been done. We urge the Council not to approve the site plan as proposed, and to adopt an assessment that includes the impulsive sound, which is the primary concern that has been going forward from the beginning of this.
Okay, thank you. Eva, is there anybody else?
Hold on just a moment. Leslie Shaughnessy, I don't know if Leslie wishes to speak on this item or the next item. Let me unmute Leslie. Do you wish to speak on the Trilogy pickleball application?
Hear me?
Leslie, do you wish to speak on the?
Yes, I can hear you. Yeah, yes, I'd like to speak on the Trilogy pickleball. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just take a moment. First, I'd like to apologize if you have to continue to listen to this ongoing scenario. The bottom line with this particular situation is, this meets the criteria under the Town of Gilbert. The nonsense that's going on back and forth within Trilogy itself, I do apologize, it just comes with a bunch of old people that we live here. I live in Trilogy as well, a bunch of old people that have far too much time on our hands, but the bottom line is, this particular plan meets the criteria, it's a necessary update. Currently, we have pickleball being played, and that's the part that frustrates the heck out of 95% of the community, is we're already playing it. We play it where you see it. All this is doing is updating the facility so that it's a safer, better facility, and the bottom line is, it'll probably be slightly quieter. You know, with all due respect to this Dr. Willis, he's making all sorts of statements and coming across, flashing his credentials, but he hasn't done any measurements. We have a team that has done measurements, and it's, we're talking a few houses. I wish, you know, that the Board could see, there's literally a few houses just beside the walkway, but there is a golf cart path, a chipping green, a parking lot, a restaurant. So, for them to make a statement that pickleball is the main cause of concern is just absurd. It's just, it's kind of one of those thorns in someone's back end that they just don't seem to want to remove. So, I would like you to look at all the work that's gone into this. This is to meet the needs to bring Trilogy current and up-to-date. As far as homes being close to pickleball courts, I've played pickleball throughout the entire valley, and I can tell you, Pebble Creek, Sunbird, Sunline Springs Village, I could list 40, 55-plus communities, all have homes right up beside the pickleball courts. And I've often said, "If one of them goes for sale, I'd be the first one to buy it." I would be someone who would walk out my back door to play. So, this whole nonsense that you have to kind of navigate through, I apologize, I apologize. I think what was presented by Ashley and by Adam is facts, and that's really what we're looking for, is an approval of what's been done. There's been a ton of work to accommodate, which wasn't necessary, but it was done out of the goodness and kindness of the heart of our Board, and to recognize the very small few percentage, five houses, that perhaps have something to say. But as I said, they backed onto a parking lot, a putting green, and a golf cart path prior to coming to the pickleball courts. So, I apologize, but thank you very much for listening, and I hope that this gets approved, because I want to play on the pickleball courts before I die. So, thank you.
Thanks. Eva, is there anybody else?
Up the lines and see if there's anybody that we missed. I will be unmuting. Please state your name if you wish to speak, and if you have not already spoken. Is there anybody that wishes to speak?
They've all gone to bed, too. Very good. Hey, Eva, thank you, and we'll close now the public hearing. Bring it up to the dais. Is there any comments, discussion we need to have?
Chair, can I just throw one thing? Typically, after the public speaks, the applicant does have five minutes to come back for a rebuttal, if they choose to. You good? Okay.
He waves it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, I guess that the one main thing that I see here is, if pickleball has been being played there for a number of years, and there's this massive impact that the doctor was referring to, I'd like to understand if, within all these documents, why are there not a myriad of violations of Gilbert Town Code that have been continuously happening as these rackets are hitting? And so, I have a very hard time understanding how it's definitive that this sound clearly is going to violate things, when if pickleball is currently being played, there should be innumerable sound code violations. And if I were an individual who was trying to block a pickleball court from being built because of sound, I would probably have gotten violations within a docket that I could then present as an objection. So, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying from my own somewhat naive perspective, it seems somewhat hard to understand how this sound can be so terribly impactful, but yet we sit here, and within these packages, there is not any violations to the current code. And so, that's, that's all I'll say.
Okay. Commissioner Jones.
Just a short observation. I actually visited Trilogy earlier this morning, and wanted to kind of see this for myself. I realize I'm coming into this very late, but first of all, I mean, the courts are currently in not great condition, and will need to be replaced anyways. Secondly, I thought, you know, adding the restrooms seems like almost a necessary amenity with how much traffic they had out there. The courts are being very actively used while I sat there, and I tried to get a feel for the noise. Obviously, I wasn't measuring that in any technical way, but I was actually quite surprised. I thought, based on having read the packet, that there would be much more noise, and I actually found that not to be the case as I sat along the eastern perimeter near these homes for several minutes, just to kind of get a feel for it. So, and of course, they're going to do some additional landscaping here, so, and regardless of what we decide here, pickleball, it sounds like, will continue to be played. So, in my mind, it seemed like a positive improvement here.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Do you have any? Oh.
I don't, I guess I would echo everything that's been shared, and I would be in support of approval.
I would be welcome. Anybody else want to? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what's, what's been said. I mean, we're, we've made concessions, or they've, the, the group that's moving forward has made concessions from 10 to 8 pickleballs being played. I agree with Commissioner Munt that if there were sound violations, we would have seen those. To Mr. Willis's point, your letter is in the packet, we have read it, so I appreciate your insight. I just, I feel like this is a definite improvement, and I would definitely be voting for it, so.
If nobody else has any, I would entertain a motion if somebody would care to put one forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the findings of fact to DR 19128 Trilogy at Power Ranch.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner, oh, gosh. Fay, thank you. Gosh, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go forth and prosper. Hit a few, hit a few for me, that'd be great. That'd be great. Okay. Next item, item number 18, GP 20-03, Town on Jermaine. Keith?
Chairman, willing members of the commission, good evening. I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. The bar is not showing up that I need to show it, so. One more second. All right, here we go. Okay, can you guys see on the screen?
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, so, I brought it before you, Town on Jermaine, which is a, hold on one second, which is located at the south of the southwest corner of Lindsey and Jermaine, the area that's highlighted in red, was brought before you last month as a study session item. So you should be fairly familiar of what is being proposed, but for the benefit of those who haven't heard this before, I'll just go, briefly go over it again. So the request is, it's on a 14 and a half acre site. The applicant is proposing to change the general plan designation from, on the property, from general office to residential 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre. And in conjunction with that general plan amendment, they're proposing a rezone, a conventional rezone versus a rezone with a planned area development. So this is just a standard rezone, pretty abnormal in the town right now, from Business Park to multifamily medium. So, as you can see here, I just threw up on the screen, you can kind of visualize a little bit better what is being changed. So currently, it's general office, and it's going to residential 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre, which is the same general plan designation as the live communities development just to the west. And then the zoning is the same thing, BP to MFM, which is the same as the Gilbert apartment community to the west. So I just wanted to kind of show you this, so you can kind of graphically visualize zoning designations in the area and what it's being changed to. So here is a conceptual site plan. Now, this is not being approved with the zone change. They will be coming forward with a separate design review case at a later date, and since this is a conventional zone change, we do not approve a development plan, so this is just for reference only. As of right now, they're proposing 207 units. Their total dwelling unit per acre average will be 14.25 dwelling units per acre. So the site, which has been zoned GP for a while, the applicant is proposing to change this due to the fact that they've owned this property for 35 years, and they have been unable to generate interest from appointment users despite the success of nearby light industrial projects and the prospect of the new freeway interchange. So market feedback has continually come back for the property owner that, due to the site's poor access and the considerable setback from Jermaine Road and the prospect of potentially placing business operations that operate, pretty much 24/7 business-type operations, so close to existing residential to the south, is just not a viable use for the site any longer. And the applicant believes that multifamily is a more compatible use in the area, especially considering the fact that there is an existing multifamily residential development just to the west that is currently under construction. So that would necessitate the fact that that's why they're rezoning and proposing to change the general plan. So that is, those are the major reasons in a nutshell. So moving on, at the last commission hearing, at the study session, there were a few concerns that were brought up by the commission that I just really want, just quickly wanted to touch on. The major concerns were emergency access and traffic-type concerns. So in your staff report, we kind of highlighted some of those things, and on page seven of your staff report, so I wanted to show this graphic for you, so you can kind of understand the emergency access situation that the applicant has agreed to with our town fire marshal. So as you know, there's only one way into this community off of Silverado Court. They have two entrances to the site. So emergency access, in event of an emergency, they're going to be required, or they're going to be using this property to the west, the industrial property to the west. So the town, and you'll see a revised condition on this, that we have included this exhibit now as part of the record and as part of this project, that the agreement with Gilbert Fire, and you can see it down on the bottom left, is that the industrial and multifamily projects are required to connect, as shown on, in front of you on the screen, for their approved site plans, the design that they have approved. And then two additional fire hydrants will be added to Silverado at the project entrances. So each entrance will have a fire hydrant, and then all the townhomes will have to have a fire, have fire sprinkler systems. So, and then also, the total traffic counts and traffic generation for the site, as currently proposed, was discussed, and I believe it was Commissioner Fay that asked for some traffic generation numbers, and I have included those in the staff report, as this project will generate about 1,500 daily trips. And the peak hour trips, 95 will occur in the morning, 116 in the afternoon, or in the evening, sorry, on a typical day. And I also included some peak and traffic information for the industrial development, which to the west, which there's approximately 271 trips in the morning and 279 in the peak hour. But it's important to note that the industrial development, their primary access will be off of Jermaine Road, and then secondary access off of Mustang, and potentially some secondary access off of Silverado Court or Silverado Street. So primarily, Silverado Street is going to be utilized by the proposed Town on Jermaine So those were just, I just wanted to bring those things up to kind of address the concerns that were brought up at the planning commission last month during the study session. So moving on, let me get my workstation working again. So as far as this project is concerned, public participation, the neighborhood, the applicant held one neighborhood meeting in June, and as I stated last month at the planning, at the study session, there were a few concerns by citizens in the area, fencing along the ditch adjacent to the southern boundary, and how that would all play itself out, and questions about amenities and sight lighting, and whether or not buildings will be facing homes to the south, and appropriate buffer along the south boundary. And I recall that I mentioned at the last meeting, that these things will be, will definitely be addressed, and the applicant will have to address during the design review stage of the application. So those are things that we're going to ensure that they address during that time to help to resolve the concerns of the citizens in the area. So in short, staff is recommending that you forward a favorable recommendation to the town council for the general plan amendment and the rezone. And I hope you were able to receive an email today concerning, or concerning some changes or some amendments to the conditions of approval. I have the conditions of approval here in my PowerPoint, if you want to look at them more in depth. So I just wanted to make sure that you were able to see those conditions of approval, and if you have any questions, which a majority of them are engineering type of conditions, we have some of our staff members, too, that can answer those, hopefully answer those questions for you. So that concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, please let us know, and hopefully we can answer those questions now for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Keith. The applicant is here. Do you want to add to it? I feel like there's something more relevant that we need to know.
I think we're good on the microphone. That's fine. Thank you. No, this has been, I'm Ben Cooper with Norris Design, representing the applicant, Family Development Group. I am a Gilbert resident. We don't really have anything to add. We just wanted to thank staff for working with us, and thank the planning commission for your feedback and guidance at the study session. We're excited to bring this luxury leased town home project to this parcel. We think it's the right place for this. We think it's probably the best use that can be envisioned for this area. We have staff support. We have the Gilbert Chambers support, which I think you'll see that in your packet. No neighborhood opposition, and we look forward to bringing forth the DR case even with a pre-application filing this month, is the plan. So we'll be bringing that forward. So we just ask for your favorable recommendation tonight, and of course, I'm here to answer any specific questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. All right, commissioners, do you have any questions or comments make on this one?
Chair?
Yes.
So just looking after, this case reminds me of another one that we saw probably a couple, maybe two or three years ago, of a rezone that went from Business Park or industrials, the one over that was water and wrecker, old Rockefeller site. There, it was the same, we're in the same situation we are here with, that they were in that site. They owned the land for so much, so much, many, many years. Landowner couldn't find anyone to build on it per that use, and obviously, you know, landlord wants to develop their land, so this is the same case here. The landowner here, what, if I understand, owned it for 35 years, didn't get any interest for anybody that wants to do Business Park there, this multifamily to the west of this site. So to me, this request makes sense to me.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anybody else? Commissioner Munt?
Thank you, Chairman. And I just wanted to echo that, you know, we had the concerns during the study session, and they've been thoroughly vetted, and I just wanted to say that I am in favor of this as well.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Everybody's nodding their head like they're ready to go on this, so I'd entertain a motion on that, on this one. We're going to have to entertain a motion for the general plan.
We do need to open it to the public. I don't know if there's anybody that wishes to speak, but let me open the line. I will now unmute everybody. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this project? Thank you.
We opened the public hearing. We closed the public hearing. We've heard from everybody. Entertain a motion on the general plan, and then we can entertain a motion on the zoning.
Chair, I'd like to go ahead and do that motion.
Okay.
I moved and recommend to town council approval of GP 20-03, a minor general plan amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay, second from Commissioner Simon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You want to continue on with the zoning?
Sure. For the reasons set forth in the staff report, I move to recommend approval to the town council for Z 20-08 as requested, subject to the additions listed in the field, in the staff report.
And I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. Now, can I get a motion on the planning commission meeting minutes from last month?
I'll make a motion to approve the planning meeting minutes from October 7th meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a second from Fay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As far as the remote, we don't have an executive session tonight, and a report from chairman and members of the commission on current events, is there any from members, commissioners that they want to report on? Other than, we had a terrific ability to go out and vote over the last few weeks, and culminated yesterday, and look forward to hearing all of the results within the next few days or weeks, whatever it takes. And look forward to Thanksgiving, and I hope that we're all taking time to be thankful for the blessings that we do enjoy, and, because we are very, very blessed and grateful for all of you guys and the effort that you put in on the commission, and spending your time serving in this way. I really do appreciate it, so. That'll turn the time over to you, Eva.
Chairman, I just wanted to wish everybody a safe Veterans Day and a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
All right. See you next month.